This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Well, it's called April 28th, 2023. We're in the meeting of the North Haven Board of Education Order at 6:30 PM. May I have a motion to approve the March 9, 2023 Board of Education meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Can you just show my abstention because I wasn't here at that meeting?
You got it. Um, there is no student representative report tonight, so we're gonna go straight to public comment. Uh, one thing I would like to say before we get to the non-agenda items is that if anybody has a question about the budget, I would appreciate it, and I'm sure the people who attended today would appreciate if you hold that till the end and let some other questions come because we've done so much budget stuff over the last couple of months with workshops, meetings, board finance, meetings downstairs in the auditorium. So if anybody has anything they would like to bring up other than an agenda item at this time, please stand, give your name.
Can we sit? Is it okay?
It's okay, just yeah.
Okay.
Just give your name, your address.
Michelle Guglielmo, 26 Curtis Court.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Guglielmo and I live at 26 Curtis Court. I would like to make my comments tonight. I would like my... I'm sorry.
Sorry, take your time. Take your time.
I would like my comments tonight to be entered formally into the record and reflected in the minutes for this meeting. I want to start by thanking the board for all of your hard work. Being a board member is difficult, voluntary, and unpaid. I know you dedicate a massive amount of your time to the work you do here, and I commend you for that. While this is the first time you are hearing from me in person, you have heard from me before. I have sent emails of appreciation for the hard work that you did during the pandemic. I also reached out in October to request the extension of free meals for all students, and I was very grateful that you heard my plea and voted to do so. I also reached out recently regarding the reason I am here to speak tonight. Thank you, Amanda, for your email. I truly appreciate your kind words. I am here to speak tonight about an incident that occurred with my son on March 8th while in the care of M&amp;J Bussing. I know that the board is aware of this incident already, so I will summarize for the sake of public record. On March 8th, my son was to take the van home. My son was driven back to M&amp;J Garage and was left asleep in the van. My son woke up alone in the van. He panicked, cried, and yelled for help. He then unbuckled himself, climbed out of the driver's door, and found someone to ask for help. As you can imagine, I was horrified by this. This is the type of thing you see on the news and never think could happen to your child. I am here to make everyone aware it can happen anywhere to anyone, even in our wonderful school district like North Haven. I am here tonight as part of my mission to ensure that this never happens to another family in this town ever again. In light of this incident, M&amp;J Bussing has reactively implemented some new policies. But how can I be assured that they will follow their own policies? They had an explicit policy in place before this incident to ensure their drivers checked their vehicles for sleeping children, and yet my son was left asleep in a vehicle. The driver attended a training specifically about checking vehicles for sleeping children in February, and just two weeks later, he was left sleeping in a vehicle. Their policy and training was not enough to prevent this from happening to my son. Unfortunately, this is not the first time I have had concerns over M&amp;J Bussing. My daughter's school requested video in December for a serious bus incident. M&amp;J took weeks to get back to administration and then said nothing was available, possibly due to an IT glitch. This is unacceptable. The response from M&amp;J following this incident with my son has been abysmal. They have reached out to me just once, nearly a week after the incident, and mainly at the request of myself and Mr. Stirk. In my opinion, they have been purposely vague and not transparent in answering many questions I asked following the incident. While I have agonized over this for the past five weeks, I feel as though M&amp;J is just back to business as usual. Because let's be real, a bus company is a business, one that you, as a board, makes the decision to hire. And they can say all they want that their number one priority is the safety of our children, but the bottom line is that they are a for-profit business that we, as a district, pay a lot of money to do a very important job. While I do not typically attend Board of Ed meetings in person, I watch every single one. I watched the February 9th meeting where the general manager of M&amp;J, Mr. Hipsher, came to speak and answer your questions regarding transportation. I went back and re-watched the meeting after the incident with my son. There are a couple of things that stood out that Mr. Hipsher said. He said, quote, "Always the most important thing, and this is why we really labor when we're trying to plan out how an afternoon works, is that we have to make sure everything we are moving is safe. Precious cargo, everything's gotta be based on safety." He also replied to one of your questions with, quote, "Because we are not going to sacrifice safety one bit along the way." Multiple board members mentioned that they agree that safety is most important, and then 27 days later, my son was left sleeping alone on a van at the M&amp;J Garage. Now knowing of this incident, I highly suggest you go back and re-watch that February 9th meeting and see how you feel about some of the replies to your questions. You may want to consider inviting Mr. Hipsher back soon to answer more questions. If you do, I will be in attendance. So what can you, as a board, do to help ensure this never happens again? Here are some things I am requesting you consider. No longer use M&amp;J as our company, or at the very least, explore other options. Go out to bid, see what else is available. I am a teacher in a neighboring district, and we just switched bus companies this year. Yes, the transition was challenging in the beginning, as expected, but people are much happier with the new company. Yes, changing companies can cost more, but can we really put a price on the safety of our children? In the event you decide to renew the contract with M&amp;J, I implore you to find a way to hold them accountable for their policies. Maybe this includes random visits and observations to make sure that vehicle checks are actually being done. Maybe it's the district hiring someone to serve as a transportation liaison of sorts that would be in charge of oversight for all things transportation, or something else, I don't know. But something needs to be done to make sure they are following their own policies. I would be happy to be part of any conversations that may happen surrounding this accountability. I also feel as though there should be a monitor on every bus and van. I know this comes at a cost to the district, but again, can we really put a price on this? A second person on my son's van would have likely prevented this from happening. If we cannot afford to accomplish two adults on every vehicle, then I want there to be a person specifically hired to check vehicles as they come back to the depot. One person whose only responsibility is to do this important check that the drivers are supposed to do, but my son's driver failed to do. It is my understanding that M&amp;J is now checking vehicles at the end of the day, but in my opinion, this is still not enough. It needs to happen the moment the vehicle pulls into the depot. Can we, as a district, afford to pay that salary if needed? Please consider finding a way to raise the bar for who is being hired to drive our children around town or to raise the training requirements. And this is not to take away from any of the amazing drivers who are out there because it is a very hard job that I myself could never do, and I appreciate all of the wonderful drivers out there. But someone dropped the ball big time here. And this was a driver for a special needs van. The what-ifs are what keeps me up at night. What if the child had been non-verbal autistic? What if the child was medically fragile? What if the child didn't have a parent looking for them right away? What if it had happened in the deep freeze of the winter or unbearable June heat? What if it hadn't been my amazingly bright, smart, brave boy who decided to get himself out and look for help? I would also like to request that whatever bus company is being used, that they keep up with, upgrade, maintain equipment and vehicles as needed. There is really no excuse in today's day and age that cameras are not present or not working or not recording. There should be cameras on every bus, every van, and covering every angle on the bus depot, including inside the garage. While I am not happy that this happened to my child, and I wish it never did, I am hopeful that the pain my family has experienced will not be in vain. I have lived a parent's worst nightmare scenario these past five weeks. I have faith, but I have faith that this board will be as upset as I am and demand change and accountability. I know I am well over time, and I appreciate you giving me the time I needed. I will end on a positive note with some recognition. Mr. Stirk has been wonderful through this entire ordeal. I know he can be a man of few words, but even so, I know he has lost sleep over this as well. I know that it pains him to know this happened to my child or any child in his district. We are lucky to have him as our superintendent. Sandra Pernetta deserves the same praise. She has bent over backwards since March 8th to make sure she is doing everything she can to support my son and me. I know she loves my son like her own, and as always, the faculty at Montalvi School has been great as well. I know they all care deeply for my child. They were the same with my older child, and I also feel lucky to be a part of the Montalvi School community. I am happy to continue this conversation outside of this board meeting with anyone who so chooses. Thank you for your time and for considering my suggestions. I'm gonna leave copies here for the record.
Well, thank you very much for that.
Can you talk about this?
We can talk about this, for sure.
Okay, because I would very much like to have an action plan from M&amp;J on this board, like presented to this board. I'm sorry, I just like...
Well, it's an upsetting situation. There's no question about that. Just take a breath.
Yeah, I too feel very strong whether that we need to hold this company more accountable. I would encourage reports from this company. I think your language was very well taken. They seem to be reactive, but I don't see proactive action plan for the deficits that we already identified this year. I think the risk of harm with this company is very, very serious. And I personally feel the man who came to our February meeting should be coming more often to this meeting until we have confidence back that the kids who are on these buses and vans are safe. And I applaud this parent because she's come up with an action plan. In the February meeting, I asked him about an action plan, and I didn't like his response. And yet we have a parent who came up with very concrete steps. It's the least that he can meet those, or at least have an explanation back to us. Otherwise, I think if there was something like this happening, that could happen.
And I think that Ms. Guglielmo's point is very well taken, that like, I want to make sure that this never happens again on our watch. I think more regular reports are wonderful. I think we have a year left in our contract with M&amp;J. Oh, okay, more than that. Two years left.
Twenty-five.
And... And to... To M&amp;J's credit, they have hired some really fantastic bus drivers. We have some amazing people who are transporting our children. But I do think that the staffing shortages has caused maybe some bad decision-making to happen here, and I would like... I understand that it's a difficult environment to hire people, but I want to plan. I want to plan to hire qualified people, like, to hire enough qualified people in order to be able to meet the needs and make sure that our kids are safe.
I just want... And it's not just a staff issue, I don't feel. I think there are policies that seem not to be followed through. They have policies that they should be following, checking a van or a bus to see if there's a child left. I'm sure it is one of their safety policies. And if I was doing a root cause analysis on this, I would want to know where was the Swiss cheese holes? Was this person running late? I mean, sometimes these incidents aren't just because of not caring. There could be many circumstances. But if we don't have an action plan saying, okay, we recognize we may have to do retraining or we may have to have someone do a sign-off, you know? In my healthcare world, when we're working with dangerous things, there's always a second person signing off on things. These are not hard solutions. This is going to cost M&amp;J a lot more. But it's gonna at least start to build back the trust that we've lost.
Well, my concern, I have spoken with Patrick about this several times, is not going to cost M&amp;J to do their job right. That's on M&amp;J, and they just need to get their stuff together and get it correct. You know, when he sat here, again, as you know, he said, "We're gonna do this, this, and the other," and it wasn't done. So beyond that, we're having problems with sporting events getting back and forth, late delays from kids coming back and forth to school. We've already started to look at our options, so it's been something that's been going on for a couple of months now. The thing about the buses is nothing really happens in a day, unfortunately, because there's... It's so intertwined with everything that's already scheduled to get somebody to come in and over... Just take over a schedule without any lag is almost impossible. So we're trying to figure out the best case now of what to do with options other than M&amp;J. And then once those are exhausted, we will have to get with M&amp;J and demand some changes, which we've talked to them about already, immediately following this incident. But there are some things that are having to be contractually changed, I think, in the future as they continue.
I totally appreciate that. I mean, we are in a contract. It's binding. We will paper. I just advocate having him look at my face and come to these meetings and tell me what he's doing.
He has, which is my concern, that he's gonna come here and say that again. The problem is the follow-through and the confirmation of things that are getting done that he says are getting done. That's kind of nerve-wracking. I don't know what he wants to do for the contract.
I just have a question. I know we had asked him a couple of questions that he was gonna come back with answers. I don't remember exactly the questions we had. Is there a possibility for him to just report back what their plan is now that this happened?
I can always call him back. I can always call him back. It's not an issue at all.
So that we can have the discussion and maybe share some of the...
You know, between tomorrow and what his schedule is, but between tomorrow and the next week, we can see if he'll come back. We can easily request that.
Or even if they could report back to us, like, okay, so this happened. Now, what are you doing?
He can do it in person.
Sorry.
He can do it in person. I would rather probably see that, man. It's something, okay, but it's just right out loud.
So, I'm just curious. So I understand we have two years left in the contract. Do we have a performance guarantee, like, built into that contract?
Yeah, Howard and I have been... No, no, no. Howard and I have been in discussions with Attorney Matt Shippman to really... Her specialty is looking at contracts. She has experience with busing contracts, so she's been helping us digest and see what options to go ask. And I'll report that very soon.
Joe?
You actually hit on what I was gonna say in... And I actually, I did re-watch just his portion of the board meeting after we found out about what happened. And I left here after listening to him, I guess uneasy is a nice way to put how I felt about some of the stuff, and then see what happened a few weeks later, and then re-watching it and listening to his answers. It's... I don't have any type of confidence that they're gonna do the things that they need to do to protect our kids. It was almost like this... I hate to say this, but like snake oil salesman. It was like, he was telling us what we want to hear, what he thinks we need to hear, but there wasn't really anything behind it, and I don't think we've heard anything from... I mean, maybe you guys in the administration have, but I know if you did, you'd pass anything sailing it on to us. I don't think he's come back with anything compared to, you know, in response to the things we asked them, and that's cause for concern. And I forget, maybe it was you, Ron, or you, Patrick. I don't remember who I talked to about this, but my position still is, and I could be dead wrong, and that's fine. But I think there's enough there from my lay perspective that they're in breach of the contract. And if there's any way we can get out of it, go out to bid and have a new bussing contractor in place for the next school year, because that, you know, whatever, the 50 days left this year, there's nothing we can do. But next school year, I'm not really comfortable having M&amp;J.
And we also have summer school and some other demands that are coming up.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's plausible to get somebody in play to pick up, you know, what's in the next two or three months, but maybe to get someone in play for August or September.
You had that conversation with myself and Patrick two different times.
Yeah.
And that's why the attorney's report, to verify that we can get out under performance basis. So that's where we're at now, is we're trying to figure out if we can, and if we can, where to go. Because that, I think getting out is a lot simpler in essence than finding out where to go.
Right.
So we are working on that.
So, Ron, just out of curiosity, so even if, you know, can we run both at the same time? I mean, what stops us from exploring our options, from doing an RFP? And again, I'm learning, but what stops us from doing an RFP just to learn what our options are?
We're doing that now. We are actively searching.
Oh, okay, you are actively...
We're actively trying to figure out where we would go and how we would do it.
Okay.
So once we get the thumbs up from the attorney to say, yeah, you have every right to bounce, where to go?
Thanks for the clear...
Yeah, no problem, no problem. There's a lot, a lot of turning gears in this thing. And we're trying to work that out. Patrick and Howard are doing a good job, but it may not seem like it's moving fast enough, but there are so many moving parts. It's a little more difficult than it appears. You know, you think you would just be able to say, yeah, you're out, and this guy's in. It's just a little more than that. Although we are trying to track that movement and get that completely, Susan. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, I've seen none. Move on. Uh, do we have parents reporting?
Hi.
Hi, Kristen Cohen from PTA Council. So not a whole lot going on with council right now. We do have our new townwide study strat fundraiser. I gave each of you one this evening. That will be benefiting our special education committee. The nominating committees for pretty much all of the schools are looking for new board members. So if anybody here or watching is interested in getting involved at your respective school, reach out to your PTA because they are looking for people. One thing that will kind of affect all of our PTAs coming into next year is National PTA has a budget deficit, so they'll be raising dues by a couple of dollars for all the PTAs, which will then require PTA dues to be raised a little bit across the boards. And the last thing is we have teacher appreciation coming up here shortly. So I know all the schools are also looking for help getting...
May?
May 8th, I believe, is the beginning of the week. So, yes, so looking... First week of May. So they're looking for parents, volunteers who would like to help with treating their teachers. And that's all we have. You can...
I have one question.
Of course you can.
So I attended the PTA meeting for Clint to build yesterday. Great experience. One question that I have is do the PTAs for the different schools, do they collaborate on programs?
Yes.
Or is pretty much everybody just does their own program?
So we have, all six schools have their own individual PTA. And then PTA Council, which I'm co-president with Jen Gearing this year, we meet with all of the PTAs every six weeks-ish. So all six schools meet during that meeting and discuss what's going on at their respective school. They discuss what's working, what's not working. And that's kind of our function as PTA Council is working with all of the schools together so that everybody's kind of working on the same team.
Okay. Do they collaborate in programs together, or is pretty much everybody?
We are trying to do more of those. Very little kind of happened during COVID. The study strat that I gave you this evening, that is a collaborative program through PTA Council that all the PTAs are helping with. In the past, we've done a road race that everybody worked together on. This particular one is for our special education committee, so the special education committee is part of the PTA Council. However, it benefits and works with all of the PTAs and actually is working with Patrick as well for some of that stuff. So, yes, everybody, we do have efforts where everybody works together. I have a really long answer to your question. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, Patrick Lawrence has a presentation. He's the District DEIB facilitator.
Where do you go?
Patrick, I'm sorry I skipped you there briefly.
I'm gonna try to work on my outside voice and project. I'm usually a very self-spoken person. Yeah, my classroom voice, so to speak. So, good evening, board members and community and staff that's here. My name is Patrick Lawrence. I'm an assistant principal here at the high school as well as coordinator over diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. Of course, we threw belonging in there because it's really what we did. We want to make sure everyone belongs and, you know, especially recognizing that. So what I'm gonna do is just talk about more or less the DEI journey that we've been taking here in North Haven and starting with just some of the beginning things that we did as a district, beginning with prior years of getting some training as a... Training through CIRK. All the admins did get this training, and we did some online training and learned a little bit about diversity, equity, inclusion at the time. It was called DEI. Of course, we're adding belonging because once again, the key is to show that in North Haven, everyone belongs. Now, since the start of this journey for me, I started a learning tour, you know? Being at the high school, I got to see a lot of what's going on with diversity, and we have a diversity team here involving students and get the students' voice, and they're plugged into many facets of the high school. Of course, I had to, you know, visited the middle school to see what was going on there and also the other elementary schools within the district. The findings was pretty positive, you know, seeing that everyone was very motivated to do the work, that we needed some guidance, we needed some direction. So, but everyone was, you know, doing various things as far as, you know, supplying classrooms and things and teaching various lessons and, of course, groups being formed. So there was an anti-racism PLC book club that was forming. I became a part of that as well, and it was a good run for a while. We developed a steering committee which consisted of myself, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the director of student services. And we meet almost every other week or so, and we just kind of talk about the different way we're going to kind of bring this work forward. So again, teachers and staff, you know, are very excited about this. Our goal is really, well, just trying to get the communication, you know, to have everyone have that conversation about diversity, equity, inclusion because it's such a difficult thing to talk about. So I wanted to make sure everyone had that opportunity. So over the summer, last summer, I developed a presentation that pretty much, you know, talked about all the work that I did as far as the reading and researching and the course at E Cornell, and that course, you know, did get a certificate to show that I finished the course, but not an expert, still learning, still learning. That's my mantra, learning and growing. So we're developing this thing together. So that presentation was shared with the committee, the steering committee, and after that, we talked about different ways of getting this, again, moving forward in the district. With that, I went back to the drawing board and developed a presentation called Equity. It was a really interesting presentation, and we looked at it, shaped it to pretty much say the right messaging because we really, again, wanted to give the teachers an opportunity to feel comfortable having this difficult conversation. So we not only wanted the staff to have it, but the administrators to have this conversation and talk about what's happening in each, in every, you know, the individual schools. So, because these things happen, you know, we're facing circumstances with various types of diversity, equity, inclusion incidents. So to talk about how did we address it and how did we handle it, so a little case study. So we, you know, have that conversation happening amongst the administration. And then, of course, after developing this presentation, I shared it with the high school staff, and one elementary school did share that as well, and we're going to be doing that with the other schools, the middle school, and the other remaining elementary schools. So this work is continuing. I'm proud to say that the members of the community, you guys are very supportive of us, and we appreciate the overwhelming support that you gave and, you know, giving us the space to do our job as educators. So thank you, and we do love and care about your kids. They're wonderful people. Thank you for sharing them with us. We want to make sure we support them and herein why we are doing this with moving forward versus equity inclusion. With that, you know, I want to mention also that we have a gentleman by the name of Tony Fariolo who presented the LGBTQ+. He shared that with us last year as administration, and this year, again, we had him come in, and he's shared with us once again, and we're trying to create some committees in the various schools to network for, once again, to support our children, okay? So again, another thing we're doing is developing a DEI mission statement, and it's currently in draft form. You guys can take a look at it at some point. And the videos, the presentations, I spoke about also. If you'd like to take a view of it, you could have that, you know, presented a little later. But that's something that we're working on with our diversity group here in the school, high school. Anything that we discuss at the committee, I try to filter it down so the students and staff get a chance to see it and get us, you know, get us... get a chance to see it and get us, you know, get their take and their feedback. So we're getting student voice as well as staff as well. Connection between people in the neighborhood, not so much neighborhood, community rather, so other districts and other communities have been kind of reaching out to folks who are doing this work and just getting information and ideas and learning about their journey. Learned from a wonderful friend now from West Hartford who went through an incredible journey. The story was amazing. And since then, been just really bumping into each other and just kind of growing my group of allies. So, and then speaking of allies, you guys are wonderful too. A lot of emails have come from you guys in terms of the community wanting to come out and support. And right now, we're just kind of trying to figure out how to utilize your skill set and the resources that's available from you. So, you know, we're not ignoring you, just trying to figure out how to utilize that. So don't stop sending emails and don't stop being interested. Again, mention of the PTA, because they are housing all the schools. It was appropriate to make sure that DEI is connected as well and that they too are working in this journey because you guys are the connection to the parents and the families. So it's a wonderful way to kind of bring that together. So yeah, mentioned the big equity presentation, that was a little bit, by the way. And again, that was, again, the focus was to start the conversation on how to face the challenges and that hard conversation, incorporating an anti-racist practice in our classrooms. Next, um, so the diversity team here at the high school consists of two staff, very motivated individuals who work with these students. And they are, they get involved with adding things to the calendar as far as observances, you know, awareness that happens every month. Weekly we have, or once a month, we have advisory, the students create videos and just initiate things that they can communicate to the, to the general body at the school. Recently, we've been working on life advice to just kind of give kids just something positive to say as we kind of, not so much moving away from SEL, but we're just trying to kind of move that forward in another light. But of course, they also were a part of bringing a gentleman by the name of Jeffrey Fletcher from the Ruby, uh, Calvin, Ruby and Calvin Fletcher African American History Museum to present here in the library. It was a really amazing presentation. He brought artifacts from the museum. The students all came in and, you know, took arounds. It was a whole day event. It's amazing. Superintendent was there and some of the board members were there as well. So it was really a phenomenal and powerful presentation. If you ever get a chance, you can go and check, I'm giving them a little plug. It's in Stratford, it's an amazing museum. Future work, collaboration with diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging in North Haven. We have a no place for, I'm sorry, let me do that again because I want to make sure I say this right. I'm collaborating and we are, we're collaborating with the diversity, equity, include, diversity, equity. I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. The coalition's later, that's something else. So we're doing a no hate, no place for hate with the middle school. And that's, um, I'm gonna be joining with, um, the, one of the middle school assistant principals, Mr. Gemetti. And that, we're going to be doing that in the weeks to come, learning about how to kind of bring that into the middle school and of course, hopefully trickle it down to the elementary school. Lots going on with slurs and kids just kind of not necessarily understanding what they're saying, what they're doing with words and want to just try to educate them. Once again, Mr. Fariolo did that presentation. We're hoping to start some things next year with these committees that we've met with and just to bring it into the schools again to have support, social workers, counselors as well as administrators are a part of this committee as well. And joining with the North Haven Equity Coalition, that's what I have to say, and do some collaborative work with them. Plans to do more with the library and library media in terms of literature selection and there was some humming out more about that. But we want to ensure that there's continuity and an appreciation for literacy. Again, it's about supporting our students and making sure that, you know, we move forward and what we do best as educators. And there's more to come. So wrapping up with this, my final statement, it's important that we continue the process of developing and strengthening the skills, instincts, abilities, processes and resources that the district needs in continuously supporting our students and staff in DEI. And the journey is never to be forgotten. It's one of my wife's slogans and the work must keep on. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you for hearing me, thank you for allowing me to have this space.
Patrick, you have one moment? First, I would just like to say.
Sure.
You're doing a fantastic job with a very difficult and multi-historical subject. I mean, it is a huge subject and you're really doing a great job. And, you know, the board appreciates, I know the students appreciate it.
Thanks.
I'm sure the parents as well. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
So I have a question. When, when you look at what, I know now you're working primarily on the foundation, building coalition, things of that nature. If you look at the next, let's say, two, three years, what is, what, what do you, what's the vision for the next three years in terms of working with the students, the parents, administrators? What, what's the, and then also building some kind of program around our coalition, around all the elementary schools and then the high school plus the middle school?
That's a great question. So again, um, right now, we're trying to build capacity and really develop allyship, not just with the community, but with staff, with the students. Again, the idea is to get the conversation to happen more. So in the next, you know, five years on the road, maybe even two years on the road, I'd like to see students comfortable talking about race, talking about and accepting people, you know, folks that identify LGBTQ+. I want to see conversations happening in classrooms that's open and people are, you know, comfortable reading material and having resources that they can, you know, have available to them. Images in, in the building that shows the diverse population. You know, we are a diverse community, even though it might be, you know, different percentages, we're still a diverse community. I'd like to see in classrooms, lessons being taught, you know, embracing, you know, those studies that, you know, everyone else in the world is going crazy about. But this is our country, you know, we have some positives and negatives in our history and we have to embrace both the negative and the positive and move forward in that. My vision is, you know, that people can be loving to each other and be mindful in that way. And that's kind of the way I look at it, you know, yeah, I look at color. I'm a man of color. But I also look at people and recognize them and I treat them with moral respect and decency. And I approach it from a point of view of love. I know people pretty much don't like to use that word love. They're afraid of it, just like they're afraid of everything else. But we need to lean into those conversations that are difficult, leaning to those moments that are challenging and difficult and treat people for who they are. Okay, be loving, be kind. So that's my passion. My, my voice gets a little shaky when I talk about it because I, I'm passionate about it, you know? And I want folks to just treat people as they should, with respect. Thank you.
Thank you so much for adding belonging. I think that's so important here too. I know Dr. Dowdai regularly says, we call people in, we don't call people out. And I, I love that approach. I'm wondering, is there anything that we as a board can be doing to support you better? Do you have what you need to be successful?
I'm gonna get back to you.
Okay.
But keep that open, keep that open. Yeah, I mean, ultimately, and this is a great place again, and the same thing we're doing with the administration as well as the staff and hopefully the students. It's already happening with kids, but we just need to direct how they're saying it positively, right? It'll be lovely to see that happening amongst the board too, having the hard conversation, having these difficult things. My heart moved when I heard about your story. Thank you for sharing that. But it's, you know, why we're here to fix things so that, you know, everyone can feel comfortable belonging and know that our kids can come to school and go home safely and find their way. So, yeah.
Thank you, Patrick, appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So I, I echo everyone. Thank you so much. I had the advantage and full transparency of working with you through the, through the high school with my own child. But I'm also thinking about with, you know, we have the, the diversity club for the high school and, you know, it's growing in the middle school. And I also understand the limited resources, I'm fully aware. But I also understand that these conversations are happening now in the elementary school and I think that's a big opportunity. So before we even get to middle school, before we get to high school, to frame the discussion, to frame how our babies interact with each other and, and move through the world and, and have their own sense of belonging. I, I appreciate the work that you're doing with the staff. I, I will admit, my, my child came home and said he was an upstander. I had to look it up because I didn't know what it was, but I found it was a word that he's used in the school based, based on conversations with you. So is there an opportunity to, and I understand the steering committee is in place, to frame, you know, to have a, a small parent committee, to have a small student council? I don't think we have to wait two years to, to have those conversations in school with the kids, that they're already having the conversations. But I think, I, I don't believe in boiling the ocean, but I do believe in taking incremental steps. So even if we just have that place and space for these kids, the parents, the, the, you know, to, to come together and provide support to you. So whatever your mission is to provide that additional support in terms of making the vision come to, come to life.
So yes, for us.
I don't even know if there's a question there.
I had to say that, that's one of the reasons why we're, you know, teaming up with PTA Association to create an opportunity for, you know, parents to, you know, discuss the diversity, equity, inclusion in the elementary schools, middle schools, elementary schools. So we're, we're working on it.
And for the elementary schools?
Yes.
For the students as well? Okay. Awesome.
Yes.
Hi, you mentioned we can have access to some of the, um, the trainings or the kinds of speakers that came in. Is there like a site that we can go to to kind of see that or?
So Patrick created his, his PowerPoint, I'll share that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And I'll include some of the site, the websites of some of the speakers and trainers.
Okay. Patrick, thank you again.
Tony Fariolo.
I'd like to go through the consent agenda. Uh, one, the resignation of Karen Castagnola, varsity softball head coach, North Haven High School. Resignation of Andrea San Perry, special education paraprofessional at Clintonville School. And the retirement of Joanne Callahan, two-three ID teacher of Green Apres School. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, discussion, on favor?
Just real quick to say thank you to all the teachers who are leaving. It, like, their impact has been felt and we appreciate their service.
That we do. On the favor? Okay, now I need to have a motion to approve the reduction in the 2023-2024 Board of Education budget, which was the $250,000 reduction. I'm looking for a second on that.
Second.
We have a discussion about it?
I've got questions. That's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we saw the line items that we're proposing to reduce. I have concerns and I just want to kind of poke at this a little bit to see. It, it's lovely that we're saying that we're not going to impact classrooms. That's like very important. But when we're reducing contingency line items for things like special education tuition by, is it $125,000? I'm very concerned about that because that doesn't leave us with much. And like, I want to just kind of understand, like, one, where does our special education continue, contingency, uh, where special fund, like reserve fund stands now? Where do we think it's going to stand at the end of the year? And then if we do have students who move into town and require our placement, I want to make sure that we're able to provide them with the placement that they need and the services that they deserve. Can we just, can you just tell me a little bit more about that?
First question, $178,000 per day is what the special education fund stands now. projecting with the expenses going on that are happening, labor expenses, probably about $40,000 at the end of the year, give or take, depending on, I, I, again, I don't know the hours in experience, I'm just going based on what the trend is there. So it's probably about $40,000. To give you an idea also, we probably will be able to increase that a little bit because of the fact that we are, we do bill, okay, I just want to bring this out. We do bill North Haven through the Open Choice Program for all the special ed services that there's students who come here, there's 51 students from North Haven who go out to our schools. And so utilize the schools through the Open Choice Program and get special ed services that cost, that coming to the total about $225,000 a year. We actually bill that, we get $3,000 per student to, that reduces that cost. But so that's, that cost is only reduced by $3,000, but at the end of the day, that's leaves us at about $185,000 that we have to bill back to New Haven, give or take. And we are only getting about 10% of that from New Haven. So why, what I'm, what I'm saying about this is that, why I brought this up is because we will be able to get some of that money back. So that $40,000 may go to be about $60,000, right? So that's, but I just want to give you a full picture. So about $60,000 is what we'll have at the end of the year. The contingency that I have put in the budget is about $425,000. Assuming about four students, give or take. I don't know the number, it's, it's, pick a number that, that could be anything like that to, take $125,000 out, leaves us $300,000 in that contingency fund. We've already budgeted for all the students that are in there, right? So they're, they're all covered, so we have about $300,000 in contingency for potentially new students coming in.
So here's where I like get a little bit worried, right? So that's a volatile line item, like gas and electric, other volatile line items in there. I want to just kind of understand what your recommended like base level of comfort is in the mix between the contingency and the reserve fund? Because I think we're running a little lean, like for my taste. And I want to just make sure that we're having this discussion and, and talking about it. Like, I think that it makes sense for us to have more than a combined total of $360,000, because that could be two students. I mean, we, we don't know what we don't know. I don't want students and families to feel like they can't move here because they're going to be under a microscope. They deserve an education and they deserve for us to know what's happening and for us to prepare. So that's one line item cut that I'm not super comfortable with. The gas and electric were two and three, that I'm not super comfortable with. I understand that those are the contingencies too, but those line items are very volatile. There are, I don't want to get political, but there are like other factors that are going to impact the price of heating and, and gas as we move forward. So can you talk a little bit about what the contingencies for gas and electric look like after those $25,000?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, that cut, the contingency is about half. There's about $50,000 per day, kind of, control those. It's about half, we're kind of, it's like $25,000, it's still left there. I have seen, just looking at the bills, the trend has been stabilized, has stabilized a little bit, going up sharply and then it stabilized, plateaued a little bit. And so I'm hoping it stays, again, it's hoping, I guess, I don't, honestly, no one knows.
My crystal ball is broken today.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, that's, that's part of the problem with that. So, um, it's to say, are you comfortable? Am I comfortable with the $25,000? No, that's why I had $50,000 there. Like that, am I comfortable with $300,000? That's why I have $425,000 there. But at the end of the day, I would want to reassure you that we will find the money if we have to for those students. So there's no doubt.
Like, let's talk about like where would that money, like, let's go one layer deeper. Let's pretend that, that worst case scenario, well, not worst case scenario, but that these several factors converge and that we have additional students who need tuition money and that gas and electric have increased. Like, where do we go next from there?
So, um, you'll see, like, I've prepared, I've, so my report, I actually gave my early budget, what I, where I think this year is going to end up. You'll see that in the, the salary line, we do have some extra money there. That's where it ends up coming in. And that's generally, I've been watching that over the last three years, you generally see that happen there because you see more teachers retire and then we hire teachers at a lower rate. And so we can pick up a couple hundred thousand dollars there in any given year. So I, I do, it's not a given, it's not a guarantee. We can have no redevelop, we don't see people retiring this year. We can have very few retire this year in there, or we don't pick that up, same amount of money. Yeah, we have very, and it's very low, maybe it's $50,000, $25,000 item. But there's always seems to be money coming in at those line items, right? So I do think there is going to be money there. I can't guarantee there's going to be money there, but the trend is looking like that. But again, the first two years of my tenure here, it's been through a pandemic, so I don't think those are normal years either. So again, it's, it's, this year seems to be more of a normal year and I think that's what we're seeing. And just going to put a little dampener on, we are in a teacher shortage right now. And so we are not as fortunate as we were in past years of hiring, could do teachers out. We have areas, whether it's math, science. We have areas, whether it's math, science, shortage where we need to have a good quality person in that classroom. And that person may be a set thirteen or fourteen that is going to be no different than the person that just retired. So it may be a wash at some point.
Well, that's sort of what I'm thinking too, because I want to make sure that we're not, our new teachers have been phenomenal, but we have more tenured teachers who are brilliant. And I want to be able to keep them and retain them and the tremendous value that they bring. And I want to make sure that for some of, some of those more specialized positions, that we're not having to sacrifice value in order to meet budgetary requirements.
We never do. And that's the message that I share with the administrators, hiring season opens, that you hire the best person to put in that classroom regardless. We'll have conversations about it, of course. We'll have, you know, sometimes principals will have two great candidates. Let's, I'll talk you through whatever it may be, but they, the budget doesn't enter their minds during that process. It's who can be put in the classroom.
And one of the things also that was considered, we could have made a hard cut, which was three teachers in the.
Three teachers and a interventionist.
An interventionist, that would have been $250,000. And we could have kept all the other contingencies where we were more comfortable. In our conversations, we felt more comfortable having that and worrying about the contingencies later. And that was really, we were where everything was at, at the time when we had to find the extra quarter of a million. So I just wanted to share that. And I, and I know, I know you support having more teachers online. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. You know, that hard cut would have been easy because that's money right there. And everything else would have been the same. So, you know, everybody knows budgets are guessing game. And it is so difficult. And I give Patrick and Howard all the credit for diving in so deep and allowing me in some of these conversations where, you know, we've had disagreements about how to, how to do things. And, you know, in the end, we're always looking what's best for the children, like every, every decision that we all make. So it's, it's difficult. It was very difficult. And then we came up with what we have today. And I just want to explain how we kind of got here and what our other real option was that we refused to take and would not take that move.
I fully agree with that. And I, I want to protect teachers and the positions that we have because they are incredibly valuable. But I think some folks have heard like, oh, they're going to cut contingencies. They didn't maybe need that money right away, but that's something that I disagree with. And would want to just make sure that we're articulating publicly.
Yes.
Because although there are contingencies that we're budgeting for, these particular ones, which are, which are logical to cut, make me nervous. And that, that nervousness comes from the fact that I don't have faith that the gas prices and electric prices will stay where they are. And we also were looking at the bus company too, right? We're looking at $15,000, $20,000, $50,000 bus company. Have we heard anything from them on that?
Yes, I've heard back from them and he is giving me an action plan.
Okay, good.
And Howard, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have to live in this budget when we get there to find out where we can, it's hard to predict where we will be able to find additional funds in case we need that. We have to be, we have to live in it. And maybe the gas does come down, maybe there's certain areas while we're living in. And I think, you know, Howard's been masterful at looking at trends over time. So as opposed to just, you know, we're going to guess we need $125 in the tuition. Well, let's see how it looked over the past few years and what we needed so we can plan appropriately.
It's more of an educated guess, a dark board kind of approach. Again, I have to commend him for doing a tremendous job and it was tedious sometimes, right? But it worked out, I think, as well as it could.
Thank goodness it wasn't $400,000.
Or $251,000.
Or $250,000, exactly, or $251,000. That's exactly correct. Does anybody have any other questions as well? All right, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Did already, can I, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's move on to the reports of the standing committees. Marty, you got ACES?
ACES right now is trying to get to the end of the year with most of their stuff. They've been looking at staffing and as we do, they're in a position where they had to notify a number of their staff that they were being let go. Most of them that are being rehired come August, the way their budget is set up. They're also expanding a couple of their programs and I don't have much information on those at the moment.
Work on construction plan?
We didn't need, because you had a session, so we're going to have a discussion after this meeting.
Want to speak on that photography class trip at all?
No, it was in your proposal. It didn't go to CNI because we didn't have the meeting. So I asked Joyce to put it in the full board packet because they want to go soon and we won't be able to get it through if we wait for the next CNI meeting. So it's a high school trip to New York City and it's the photography classes. Wendy Wade is the teacher and Diana Blythe, our art coordinator. And a parent who will go on this trip as chaperones. And right now there's about 15 students interested in coming.
May I have a motion to?
Ron, you want a motion to approve the trip?
Excuse me?
You want a motion to approve the trip?
Yeah, I want a motion to approve the North Haven High School photography class trip to New York City on May 1st, 2023.
I'll make, I'll approve the motion.
I'll second.
Do you have any discussion?
Again, just thank you for this opportunity. This is a great opportunity for the kids.
All in favor?
Aye.
Education public?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the meeting last week, but I did talk to Mr. Calabrain, the chairman, and he just asked that I shared the comedy night for, that foundation is coming up on April 28th. It is at the Knights of Columbus Lodge over in Hampden there. So I have the flyer here if anyone's interested. The flyer is going home to schools and I think they're posted on some of the, some of the front doors of the schools as well. So it should be a fun night.
Let's go over some policy about the second read of the following policies. Policy 5141.20, when an illustration of student medications in the schools. Policy 5141.25, management planning guidelines for students with food allergies, lichen gene storage disease, and/or diabetes. Policy 5145.4, non-discrimination. Policy 5145.8A, policy regarding students in section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. Series 4000 personnel policy, emergency action plan for interscholastic and intramural athletic events. Series 4000 personnel policy, extortional heat illness awareness for intramural and interscholastic athletics. We can all have that, prayer for our next call. I appreciate that. We go to superintendent's report?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a short report tonight. I did have some items to share around, initially around M&amp;J bus company, but we had a lengthy discussion around that in this meeting. Thank you so much for coming to speak today. And it's unfortunate I've not been able to so well through this situation. Just want to share a little bit on our senior graduation. It is scheduled for Thursday, June 15th. It will begin at four o'clock and it will again be held behind the turf fields like it was last year. Dr. Dall I received really great feedback. I think folks like the backdrop of the turf field and the fields. And it also helps preserve our new track. We do not want trucks and equipment being lugged over the track to get to the field there. So I think it serves two good purposes. So again, Thursday, June 15th, four o'clock. Actually, the end of my report today.
Assistant superintendent's report?
Okay, this evening instead of slides, I have left you a brochure, which is actually a smaller version of this board that's out here. And those materials were shared a few weeks ago at the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent's Conference. Our summer programs have been recognized by this group and honored as an exemplary program. So as part of this distinction, we were invited to come and present and share our work. So Mary Lynn Tantorski, one of the coordinators, and myself went and we highlighted our programs for other districts. I know I've spoken about this in the past, but we've had very robust programs, especially since COVID. We've grown them having intervention, enrichment opportunities, and they, they range from kindergarten through grade 12. And we also have credit redemption opportunities for high school students who need to make up age credit so that it puts them on track for graduation. And annually, there's an extended year program for eligible special education students. So again, this year we are offering all of these items and we're actually adding a pilot for incoming kindergarten students who could maybe use a little bit of readiness. And bringing STEM and elementary science into our programs because it's been such a buzz during the school year. So we thought this would really keep the motivation going. Information will be forthcoming in newsletters so parents can keep an eye out. And teachers will be reaching out for students that may benefit to encourage families to participate. And it really has just been like it's home school. We have SROs, we have nurses. Last year we had over 400 students participating. So it's really a wonderful opportunity. I can't thank our teachers who participate because they really give up a lot to come in the summer to do that. So we're so grateful to them. Our directors, Mary Lynn Tantorski, Jody Wilcox, Anthony Mastriano, and Tracy Amberdella are just dynamite. So it's a lot to celebrate and it's.
So the representative from CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public Superior Superintendents, was legitimately harassing me to make sure that we were represented at their showcase. Because from what I gather, the program that's been created here mainly by Melinda has, has become the model for the state because we're not only supporting our learners who need to close that gap, we're hitting the enrichment edge of it as well. So we're hitting all fronts in all grades and the turnout of 400 students is truly amazing. And it's one of a kind program from around the state that I've gathered. People are calling us about that, so.
And we're really fortunate because we don't offer transportation. We can't budget that in. There's transportation for the special education sides of the programs, but really parents are so gracious in terms of bringing their students and our directors try to work really hard to be flexible in terms of time and pick up and drop off. And we really truly run it like a school. You, you know, you're in line and there's signs and drop off and pickup. And last summer, that representative from CAPS, I think, visited us three different times. We were written up in a state program book that I know Patrick had shared the article earlier in the year. And it's really something that the district should be proud of.
Can I just say one thing? I, I agree with you completely and everybody that participates and all the teachers and staff, but I think you're being too humble. Like I've never heard anything but a phenomenal response to anybody that's participated in this program and all the work and time and effort that you've put into it, Melinda. You're, you're very kind to share the praise with everyone else, but, and as you said, the district is benefiting it and we're being recognized from it and in large part that's due to your hard work. So thank you very much.
And just one little plug, we are going to try to budget next year so that we're able to keep this robust program going. So that would be an ongoing conversation.
Director of Student Services report?
Sure. The State Department of Education offered all directors across the state the opportunity to apply for a grant called TT Set Stipend. The grant was approved for North Haven and each special education teacher and related service staff member who complete individualized educational plans will receive a stipend of $250. Each staff member mentioned will receive the stipend once the funds are released from the state. And I appreciate all the hard work the staff has done to learn and navigate the new platform this year.
Director of Finance Operations and Human Resources?
Thank you. As the report, as my report shows, spending continues to trend in line with last year. However, I did want to bring up a few other items where we're seeing an uptick in the need for overtime, shift differential and substitute costs. And I just want to bring that up because we talked about where I provided the projected, whatever, where our budget would end the year. And you'll notice in the substitute, certified substitutes and the non-certified substitutes are both in negative balance category. Just wanted to give you a little bit statistics behind that. This year, as of this year, we have, it's the first year we started tracking the detail for FMLA. And we have 49 requests for FMLA leave this year. Anytime you, and I believe it was 15 of those were pregnancy FMLA leaves. So anytime you're doing that, you're double paying, right? You're paying the person because they have the sick time utilized for six, eight, well, in the case of pregnancies, it could be eight or 10 weeks. Or other people who go out, you're paying them and then you have to pay someone to do their job. So when I budget, I budget it for 15 long-term subs. I have 15 people already out, I'm just on pregnancy. And then on top of that, you have all, you have the other additional people who are off because of that. So that is why you're seeing this trend this year being higher. I am going to be tracking it going forward now that this year, first year, I'm tracking the FMLA more diligently, trying to see exactly what the trend is so that going forward we can make a more educated budget going up regarding substitutes and the need for those, what that budget would be. But I just want to give you that, that little technical behind these backgrounds on why we're seeing such a, or we're going to see a negative balance in those line items.
I just add that for those who don't know, FMLA is Family Medical Leave Act.
Exactly.
Just in case anyone doesn't.
All employees are entitled to 60 days for, in this case, in the education field, it's 12 weeks of Family Medical Leave Act. It's unpaid, but the federal law allows the district to allow them to utilize their approved sick time. And the way approved sick time works is they can accumulate it up to, it depends upon their contract. It's like more than, in cases up to 185 days. So what will happen is they can utilize all of that time to be paid over 60 days. And at the same time, we're paying the substitute. In the case of long-term substitutes, it goes from paying $140 that we budget per day after day 40. When it becomes day 41, they get paid the $245 a day. So all of a sudden your cost doubles almost. So it becomes a, it's, when you're starting to see a lot of this happen, that's where your budget gets out of way. But again, that's an unknown, it's a variable. To your point, it's, how do I know who's going to take FMLA next year? But I think what we can do is we can try and trend it and see exactly where we like, find the trend and try to make our best estimates.
Do you monitor our population of teachers? So when we were discussing before, we're starting to see teachers, there's a portion of teachers retiring. And but saving is we're hiring younger teachers at a lesser rate. But younger teachers will be starting families. And so when you do your predictions, when you're looking at these trends, are you bringing that into consideration, what percentage of teachers under the age of 40 will say, or how it has shifted so that you can plan appropriately for next year?
I haven't got there yet, but that's hopefully where I will get. The first step was to start trying to, all right, how many FMLA people, how many people go on FMLA every year? Again, the last first two years was a pandemic. Not a lot of people were going out and FMLA because there wasn't a lot of people, like, Trump hijacked and stuff like that. So, but now we've seen, and again, there was a trend, I guess, there was a lot of pregnancies that came out of the pandemic. So again, we're seeing that, that's a trend. Is that, is that going to be a trend going forward? Who knows? But again, yes, I do want to get to that level of technical expertise, so to speak, or tracking trends so that we can say, yeah, our age, the age of our teachers is this, they're females, right? So therefore, chances are we have more happen more, or slightly start families.
Men also think.
Yes, but the way, they can take FMLA, but they only get two weeks, right? Because the way, the way it works is two weeks of leave. They get 10 days of family leave. So they don't get the full eight to 12, 10, eight to 10 weeks that a female gets for recovery from pregnancy.
When we did next year, the budget that just got reduced by $250, did we account for an increase, the increase that we're seeing currently in FMLA usage?
Can you come down with that?
So Howard, I know this is the right question for you or Patrick. You have mentioned teacher shortage. Is that in relation to the FMLA request or is this just generally what you're seeing?
No, it's just generally what we're seeing.
Okay, is that for this academic year or looking towards the fall?
The shortage itself.
Yeah.
It's a nationwide teacher shortage that has been impactful, actually, starting last year. We have seen our elementary candidates in some positions. When I was in Ridge Road, we had 300 plus candidates for one position. We're down to, you know, 80, 90, sometimes even lower for elementary positions. So it's a sharp decrease. And then you look at the areas of shortage where we could end up with under 10 for some, for some of these teachers. for some of these teachers.
You mean, so when you say 80 and 10, you're talking about applicants?
Applicants, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, and these are qualified applicants?
Correct.
Okay, so the application is, even though it's lower, it's there?
Yep.
Okay, but we don't have a teacher shortage per se?
We do not have a teacher shortage right now.
Okay, or because when you said I was like, okay, okay.
But I'm just talking about applicants, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
I didn't mean to give you a heart attack.
Just as Marie mentioned in terms of, you know, going out for maternity, emotional wellbeing as well with FMLA, you know, just something to think about tracking there as well from an FMLA perspective. We're seeing that in the industry right now, so.
No, I think there's a lot of statistics there that we can utilize and the reasons for going out FMLA, again, it's a tricky thing because we have to keep it, that's all confidential, right?
Exactly, absolutely.
So I have to keep names out of it. But it's something I do want to do because again, that's the only way you're going to get to a better number is to be able to understand the root cause of why these, why someone's going out or how many are going out and trend tracking that. I know insurance, insurance industry does a lot. They do it for our risk assessments and they give us all the actuarial information. So I think that's something we can utilize, we can utilize.
The data.
The data, go to our actuaries from our medical and say, okay, well, here's, you know our population, well, how, give us some data behind that that you can actually show, give a predict, right? Because that's what they do, that's their job is to predict that.
And we're self-insured, correct?
We are self-insured, but it's through the anthems, right? Request for Shield, and that's just been re-upped this year. So that will be with them next, next few years, I guess, three years, as the program works. So I think we can utilize that because again, they have all the data and they have all the people there, so we can utilize them to get that information. We've brought them around as our brokers, so they're very good at doing the statistical analysis that we just don't have the bandwidth, right, myself or my staff to be able to. But again, we have the resources that we can go out there, we're paying them a lot of money.
They do have to be, so you definitely ask them.
I just haven't got there yet, so we will hopefully in the next year.
Okay, so I'll continue on. Again, I talked about the very preliminary estimate of where the operating budget will end the year. Again, as I said, this is very preliminary, as we still have part of April and all of May to see what the expenditures will go, combined with the unknown and the final numbers on the excess cost grant from the state. And that being said, at this point in time, we're estimating there would be a $200,000 balance under unutilized funds considering, but considering the town does not fund the Board of Ed capital projects, this amount stands, it'll be our recommendation to you that that is where we put the funds so that we can pay for those, as we talked about, that immediate need, which is about $175,000 to take, is where we recommend that to the board. But again, we have to see where they're going to come from. Monthly transfer report was provided in your package. I'm just going to answer any questions. Non-operating items. Cafeteria fund, we have received quotes for new walk-in freezers and coolers from Montez Elementary, Clintonville Elementary, and Ridge Road Elementary. The cost to replace all three of those will be about $78,000 and that will all be paid out of cafeteria funds, which are now, we are now again back in the mode of free lunches for everyone. So that's, that fund will be increasing again as opposed to increasing as it was initially. Capital projects, although my report stated nothing needed to report since this was written, the slide at Ridge Road that was broken and unusable has been replaced since I wrote that report. We also want, the final item I had from other non-operating items is the Giles Avenue package, the additional space proposal. The facilities department has received a proposal from the current landlord of the Giles Avenue facility for an additional 1,500 square feet of space adjacent to the current space and provide an extended lease. And I just wanted to present that to you.
We're going to have my actual table at, I'm going to table it.
Medical reserve numbers, 2... Medical reserve, $2,639,447 is the current reserve balance at the end of March. It's 117% of the year requirement required by the actuaries. Workers' compensation is $667,756. Sped is the $178,650 I talked about. Capital projects are currently $90,427, but with the projects that are still open, it's $15,720, but that can be added to your end. And then the excess cost grant, which I don't have the final number for, I just received the actual percentage. If you recall, I told, as we mentioned, the law had been changed, we say 70% was 85%, but I also found out that the appropriation, depending, that's all dependent upon the appropriation from the state. And so the actual percentage ever getting is 73.3%. That's not 85%. So it's only 3.3% higher than the 70%. So it's not a whole lot more than what we projected. Any other questions?
I have a question. Sorry, too late. So this doesn't, you said, you said trends, so I'm just, I just have a question and I know it's a lot of information, but a couple of board meetings ago, you guys were chatting about getting trends for how the schools are going to grow. And I know it's a lot of info. Do we have any inclination on when we'll have that information on the growth of the school district?
So I think it comes, the NESTAD comes out quarterly, so I hope it comes soon. And we're also looking, I think it's called SLAM that was, so that's the other one that was recommended to us by colleagues. We haven't reached out to them yet, but that will be our secondary one. And those are supposed to be according to them more readily available to us, more school-friendly information, more actionable things that we can talk about. So coming soon.
I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report including the recommended transfers. Take it a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Show move.
All right, I was going to make, I was going to do, try to get approval for the additional maintenance garage. There's some information that's out there that I want to exhaust before I present it because I know there's going to be questions asked about it. And I want to make sure that we have, I have those answers for you before I even ask you to consider it. So I would like to have a motion to table the discussion on the additional rental space at the maintenance garage on Giles Avenue.
Want to table?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about it? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, show move. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Public comment now will be reserved for any agenda item. You step up and name and address. It's all yours.
My name's Jamie Chris Marzic and I live at 73 Lexington Gardens. I just wanted to thank the administration and the board specifically for today and bringing Mr. Lawrence to talk and give that presentation about the DE and IV work that he's doing across the district. I think that this is probably the most critical and important work we're doing for our students and schools. I'm so happy he's here. I'm so happy he's engaged with the community, with the PTA. I'll speak for myself only, but I think that a lot of people would echo that we want more. You know, we as parents want more. We want to engage with our kids, we want to know how to support them in this learning and education. We talked about training the board members, obviously, training faculty and staff. I think parents as well want these trainings. And I know that that's cost prohibitive probably from a lot of standpoints. But I think bringing in speakers for parents about this work is really critical. I'm going to second what Ms. Tice Morris spoke about at the elementary school level. I don't think we can limit ourselves to middle school and high school diversity clubs. I think this should absolutely exist at the elementary school level. Additionally, I think something I'm going to call out that Green Acres did or call in, the One School, One Book, you know, and how that developmentally is so appropriate to talk about inclusion, empathy, loving kindness, things that, you know, Mr. Lawrence talked about and are so appropriate at the younger levels. We could be doing that work for our K through five, absolutely, and building the culture that we certainly want at the middle and high school level. Mr. Lawrence also talked about literacy and how literacy is so critical to understanding, you know, students' perspectives, a mirror and a window. We've used that language a lot. I was recently made aware about at the middle school level, language arts teachers having to block off their books for fear of books being vetted or being challenged by parents. And again, I just want to speak for myself only that I want my kids to have access to all reading material, all books. If people don't want to read a certain book, I think they should have that choice, but it should not be at the discretion of an entire district or a classroom to remove literature from the classrooms. And again, I think this can be done in a developmentally appropriate way. I think that there's way to talk about anti-racism work, you know, as Mr. Lawrence is saying, LGBTQ plus students, gender identity, these issues, these conversations are not too mature for our younger grades. So I just, I want to echo what Ms. Tice Morris said about bringing that work to the elementary school. I'm so happy that we have Mr. Lawrence here doing that work in our district. So thank you so much.
So first, I'd like to thank you for bringing Mr. Lawrence here.
Can you push that?
Yeah, sorry, Mariana, my name is Mariana Negro Matos. I live on two prior old circle.
Thank you.
So this is my first year here in North Haven and I've been very happy with the schools. And I want to, you know, acknowledge all the work that you do and the work that my kids go to Ridge Road and I appreciate a lot what the teachers there do and... Sorry.
Thank you, Sarah.
So my kids, we came here 10 years ago. We are Brazilians, both my husband and I. And I'd like to hear, thank you. What has, what has been done, like to recognize in terms of, we're talking about the next school, next school year and the dates that we observe and the things that are important. I see around a lot of towns what they do when they celebrate the Hispanic and Latin Heritage Month. I've been seeing that we have like around 10% of our students that recognize themselves as, you know, Latin and Hispanic. And I think it is a topic that is very important and has to be brought at all levels, elementary schools included. My kids are very proud of their culture. My son came home with a letter written in Portuguese this week that he wrote because his teacher gave him the opportunity to write because my mom recently passed away and he really wanted... So I just want to say that I want to hear what we're thinking about, how to recognize those people. Because my husband and I, we're bringing Brazilian people to this town because we believe in this town. We have four new Brazilian students just this year, so I think this 10% is like from maybe two years ago. And I want to see these kids proud of their cultures, not only, you know, all the Latin, like all cultures that we can recognize, we can celebrate the dates that all the different people celebrate. So I, sorry, I'm very emotional today, but I left my kids at home in a very special moment for me so I could speak up. So I wasn't going to sit, I talked to some people here around before, but I'm not a person who likes to, you know, speak a lot in public except for my work. But I think it's, you know, it's something really important. Like, I worked with education in Brazil before I came here for my postdoc. And we were really like, while we're doing hands-on science course at like, you know, college level, we are going to the communities with people who grew up in their communities that end up going to Harvard so they could see themselves and recognize themselves in people who are successful there. And I just want to, you know, again, thank you so much and thank you for the teachers who recognize those students and who let them, you know, show what they know and be proud of who they are. And I just want to move forward that we have more of these discussions of the different people and appreciate, you know, all the diversity that the town has. So thank you so much.
Does anybody else have a place to speak?
Hi, Tim Gabriel, Renee Lane. And I also wanted to echo the support for the DEI. So Mr. Lawrence had to leave because I wanted to kind of tell him his own space. It's great to finally hear that work. We've been looking forward to hearing about some of the great stuff that he's been doing for a while. And I'd love to be able to dig into it. I especially loved him sort of describing his passion for why he does this. And I definitely share that as well. To me, it's vital that this work sort of continues and expands. It's an urgent need and I want to highlight a couple examples, not to sort of veer things in a negative direction, but just to show that this is kind of an ongoing issue. There was a article probably about a month or month or two ago that had described a transgender student of color who was in the North Haven schools, who had unfortunately left and kind of left because of sort of not feeling welcomed, saying that they had kind of been thought of as an outcast and was not really accepted into any of the spaces that they were going into. This was otherwise like a model student who was, you know, had started, had apparently worked on starting a diversity club at the middle school, which Sharon and common with my daughter, who's also trying to do that now as well, and was just kind of made to not feel welcome. Another example is, you know, a couple of weeks ago, there was a, these are all from the middle school, was sent out, there was an email that was sent out. It was just like the morning announcements, but in those announcements, there was a quote and it seemed like an innocuous quote if you didn't read who it was from, but it was from Robert E. Lee. And just having everybody sort of be on the same page of like recognizing who Robert E. Lee is and like being able to know that that's not a person that we should be, you know, trying to take advice from. I think it's kind of a vital part of like why you're providing an education to everybody in the district. And then the other thing is just, you know, I mentioned that my daughter is starting the diversity club. There's been kind of a slow process of getting that going. She had kind of came forward with this initiative in the fall and they still haven't had their first meeting yet. And there's a number of reasons why that's happening. But I would think, you know, the impact that some of these kind of like structural things can have on students, if my daughter had not been sort of, you know, been encouraged in the background by, by me and my wife to continue going with this, I think she probably would have just gave up on it at some point and just been like, okay, well, I guess we're not going to have a diversity club at the middle school. So I want to just, you know, sort of highlight those things about like why it's important that we do this work and why we continue to do it. I also, you know, was a little surprised by hearing about, I'd heard about the issues with the books as well, too. I didn't want to like go too much into it, but I did want to like give you guys, if you wanted to, like the chance to elaborate on what actually the situation was because I'm hearing a lot of stuff secondhand and I'm not exactly sure what happened either. So, but I, of course, do not, you know, support like parents being able to decide what's taught in the curriculum. We've been over this a couple times in the past. You know, I didn't move here to send my kids to PragerU. I moved here so that educators can educate them. This is not a burger joint. It's not something where you can customize your menu of what education you get. Students should be getting the education that our educators, educators feel is appropriate for them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel. So just to elaborate on what you had requested, the, currently, the books at the middle school are going through an inventory. We want to make certain, we know what is getting into kids' hands. And this is not talking curriculum books, this is talking independent reading books. Our curriculum is set, it is, it's actually being revamped at the middle school currently, but we're, the, some of the questions that are out there has only to do with the classroom libraries and the independent reading books of this. I just wanted to make that delineation between the two. But we're going through an inventory to make certain that we know what's inside those classroom libraries. So when they're getting to kids' hands, we know what literature they're looking at. And a lot of classroom libraries are, you know, we're coming to find that some of the material in there might not be developmentally appropriate. Doesn't mean that it doesn't belong in some student's hands, it just might not belong in a sixth grade student's hand, it might belong in a 10th grade student's hand. So we want to make sure that we are solid on what we're offering students so it's developmentally appropriate. Doesn't mean it's going away, it just might be at a different grade level where it's appropriately placed.
Yeah, and classroom libraries, they are sometimes a hodgepodge of materials that teachers have inherited from teachers before them, from tag sales, from parent donations, so.
Their own collection.
Right, their own collection. Right, their own collections, so the conversations that we've had with teachers at the middle schools, really, the books are fine on your library, as long as you know what those books are, and you have read them, that, you know, if it's a sixth grade classroom, you don't have maybe an adult book that was picked up at a tag sale that's now on your shelf. So that's the inventory process of that.
And some of it came from opening a book and seeing it was stamped, North Haven High School, okay, well, that just means it left the curriculum and ended up at the middle school, we need, that's not okay, it might be okay, we just need to make sure it's okay before it's, you know, before it sits there in that library.
Can I ask a question about this? Because I don't know, like, who decides what's developmentally appropriate? It's professionals, right?
Professionals.
And we're, we're doing an inventory that's strictly focused on developmental appropriate, and it's not about anything else.
You put a period after that. And Tracy Gavardella is our K through eight professional for our ELA coordinator, and Devin Mann is nine through 12, and they are the experts in our district around literature and so forth, and so we rely heavily on them. They are well-educated enough.
And they're reading away. And, you know, this, this, just for full transparency, opened up conversation around digital books that we have as well, so at the particularly six through 12 level, we have an app that's called Sora, that houses a whole bunch of books that we buy licenses for. So our technology department was very helpful during the pandemic in terms of populating those devices with lots and lots of books. So I too have been reading away, and took a tablet with me over spring break, because I've been reading all these books. And as I was reading them, I thought to myself, I can see everything on the Sora app, can everybody else see everything on the Sora app? So I dug into this with Jen Kay, who's so amazing, and she's going to try to work with this Sora company to make sure that if you're in middle school, you're looking at literature that's more middle school-based, as opposed to the whole big picture. So, you know, I think it was maybe Patrick Lawrence who said, or somebody who said this evening, that, you know, we have to be open to kind of having conversations about things that are working and things that aren't working, and always try to be getting better at what we do, and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our kids. So that's what this inventory really is about, is just making sure that developmentally we know what books kids have in their hands in classrooms.
Is that it? Yes. So, like all things, and I think just because I'm a marketing communications person, like, the communication breakdown. What is the communication that's happening with our educators, with our teachers in the classroom, so that as we're talking about what the process is, that we feel that we're supporting them in terms of what their decision-making process is, right? So it doesn't feel, or doesn't appear punitive, but more of, you know, I think it's just in the messaging and how you continue to support them. I'm not saying that we're doing anything wrong, I'm just curious in terms of what that communication process is with the educators.
So we, we actually were at the middle school today, talking to the administration, a few teachers, and Linda gave an example when we were talking, is there's a sixth grade teacher who has a library, and she told Tracy, my library's set, I know everything that's in it, great, go, like, you don't, there's no inventory required, you know it's there, we're not trying to take the autonome way from teachers at all, they're the professionals in their classroom, we just want to know, them to know what they're putting in students' hands, so.
And I think that some teachers have been rightfully so, are reluctant to make that decision, too. And so we honor that as well, and that's, that's the reading piece, and, you know, there's really so many of us that can be reading away, so it's a process, it won't happen overnight, but we're chipping away and we're working at it.
Just getting through this process.
And, you know, grade level meetings happen every week with our coordinators in that content area, so there's, there's time for dialogue, there's time for conversation. Patrick and I are going to the middle school next week for a voluntary meeting with the language arts teachers, if they want to come and talk and kind of problem solve, so.
Because they voice their frustration to us, and we want to get it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hi.
I'm sorry?
I'll just write my name down.
Oh.
I'll introduce myself. I didn't plan anything official, I just wanted to very quickly say, my name's Lisa Lehman, I live in Justine Drive in North Haven, and I was very happy to see Mr. Lawrence come tonight and provide such a detailed report on what he's been involved in. My, our daughters are older, and I'm excited that they've been able to see the arc bend this way towards the end of their career here at the North Haven Public Schools. They are, it's happy to see it as well, and I would like to see more of that information from Mr. Lawrence, and from the folks he's working with, to understand better how it's being implemented in all the schools, and I echo the need to make sure that the elementary schools are also a priority in this whole process. And I'd also like, I think someone else said, that to give the students a voice in this process, they're the ones who are in the classrooms, they're the ones who are hearing the words, and the comments, and the side conversations, and I think a lot of them right now don't know where to go if they think something is not happening the way it should. Like, I know that there's been times that my daughters have come home and told me stories, and I said, well, what did you do about it? And they're like, I didn't, I didn't know what to do about it. So I, I think the diversity clubs are a great start, but I'd like to see to fold in more of the students, to have a voice, to have a safe space to share experiences and their thoughts on it as well. But I do applaud this group and all the work that's being done for that, I think it's absolutely fabulous, and thank you. I just have one personal question. I am, I believe, one of, well, we are one of two families with seniors this year who also attend ECA, and the graduation is the same day. So who can I talk to about possibly making it to both, or what we do about that?
I recommend you start with Dr. Dali.
Okay.
And please, if you're comfortable, CC me on that.
Okay.
We can have that discussion.
I don't know that it's possible, but I just was wondering.
Yeah.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Seeing that there's no one else, may I have a motion to adjourn the April 20th, 2020 curriculum meeting of the Board of Education?
I just wanted to give a plug for Teachers Appreciation Week that's coming up in May, I think our meeting will occur after that, and I just want to thank, we are so appreciative of all the hard work our teachers give to the school system, and their professionalism, and the high standards, and if I could, I'd give them all the best bucks, but just wanted to let them know that we truly, truly appreciate all the hard work.
I apologize, thank you.
Sorry.
Ellie Mulligan, State Street, just wondering when officially is the last day of school? Isn't it usually voted on at this meeting?
Important business, right, Ellie?
Yes.
June 16.
And these are the last three days, half-days?
And what?
Last three days, half-days.
Last three days are going to be half-days of school?
Sometimes the case, but that's not decided till later. That has been the trend over the last, before my time, so it's something I would need to talk to the Board, probably, that maybe.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn?